Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Beaver Creek City Council Meeting. This is, before we get started on our regular agenda, we have three sets of guests with us this evening, and if council does not object, I'm going to change the order. We would like to do the Lego demonstration first, the UES presentation second, and the Girl Scouts third. And that, if there's no objection to that, that fits in right with what you need the Girl Scouts for, too. I would like to introduce Amanda Bullock, and Amanda will introduce a very special local Lego team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So today, we have seven students who are fifth and sixth graders from Ankeny Middle School. They are the Darth Foxes. Among the awards that they've gotten this year are the first place for Inspiration Award, the Wright Patterson Air Force Base Educational Outreach Office Founder's Award, and they're going to tell you a little bit about themselves.
Do you want us to face this way or face that way? Face them out there, okay. Look this way.
Oh, no. Let's face this way.
Either way? Okay. They're going to come up. Go ahead and, yeah, we're going to face them. I mean, real quick, say a couple more words introduction I give to you. So this is, they're going to introduce themselves as a team, but you came, you're thinking maybe you're going to see a lot about Legos, but they're going to first tell you just a couple of things that are sort of bigger than that. The first thing they're going to present to you is their, what we call their core values presentation, which is all the things they're think, learning about how to be a team, core values or principles that they're striving to, and how they're applying those to their lives, and how that's leading them to help others. So here you go.
So, we're going to introduce ourselves. This is Alex.
This is Addie.
That's Alyssa.
That's Sophia.
That's Avery.
This is Jackson.
And that is Brady.
Hi. We are the Darth Foxes. We are a Lego robotics team from Ankeny Middle School.
Bum, 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 ba-dum, bum, ba-dum.
Our favorite core values are: We are a team. We have fun. And we practice gracious professionalism and cooperation. When our teams started meeting in June, we each thought of goals we had for our season. We voted and narrowed it down to five main ones here. We presented these goals to our parents to help make sure we stuck to them and worked equally hard on all three areas of Lego League.
Our first goal is help start five new teams. Why five? Last year, most of the other schools in Beaver Creek didn't have Lego teams. We wanted to give those five schools the same opportunity we had.
First, we presented about Lego League to the Beaver Creek School Board. The school district set up meetings at all the schools and asked us to run them. We shared our experiences, demonstrated the robot, and signed people up, and it was super fun.
In the end, we helped start 11 new teams. We even taught one how to program. Now, every elementary school and every middle school in Beaver Creek has at least one Lego team. By the way, we also helped start 23 junior Lego teams.
Our team loves to have fun. Some examples are pool parties, laser tag, snowball fights, video game slash programming nights, or even just eating together. Having fun is one of the main parts that we like about Lego League, and one of the reasons we want to share our experiences with others.
Sometimes we vote on things, and sometimes we want everyone to agree. For example, when we were deciding on our team name, one person didn't want the same team name as everybody else. When we tried to discuss it as a team, one person felt ganged up on. We realized in these situations, we need to take time to hear their concerns, talk to them one-on-one, and give them time to think about it alone.
Every single person on our team wrote examples of how we use Lego League or values outside of Lego League. We would like to read a couple of these for you.
Before I started FLL, I didn't really share my thoughts with others. I was rather shy. I had been writing a story and didn't really want others to read it. One day after practice, I remembered the core value about sharing our experience with others. I asked my language arts teacher, Mrs. Stevens, to read it, and she did. She loved it, and now she reads it every Monday.
I wanted to make my own Halloween costume, but I didn't know how. My mom said that my neighbor, Mrs. Heather, knew how to make a skirt for my costume. Then I remembered a core value. We worked to find solutions with guidance from our coaches and mentors. That got me thinking. When I go to Mrs. Heather's house to make my skirt, I don't want her to do all the work. I want to ask Mrs. Heather to only guide me through the process, so that's exactly what I did. I learned a lot, and I had fun.
Now, you have heard about Darth Vader wanting everybody to join the dark side of the force, huh?
The Darth Foxes want you to come to the fun side of Lego, of robotics, and join Lego League.
Dun, dun, da-da-da-dun, dun, da-da-da-dun, dun, da-da-da-dun, bum, ba-da-bum.
All right, pass that down to me. Good job. All right, so you heard, that was the, what we would consider the first part of Lego League and talking about those core values, and you heard how they, one of those things is leading them to share that with others and help other teams. It's big about working with others, and part of that is that we've, because of these kids and because of the school board and lots of people working on the district, we now have programs like this at all of the schools across the district, as well as teams that are meeting outside of the schools in homes. So there's lots of opportunities. If you know of kids that want to be involved in this, there's definitely a way to do that. Get ahold of your principal, get ahold of us, you can help get you involved in that. So the second big part of Lego League is what is called the project. And so each year, the Lego League introduces a theme, and the kids are challenged to go and find a problem in that theme area, and then come up with a solution to that problem, and take it as far as they can towards a real product. And so we're, I'm going to, normally, they would have a lengthier presentation about this. They do a fun skit that's in the theme of Shark Tank, so that's, but we're going to skip that, and just, I'm going to interview them a little bit, so they can share just a little bit about that to keep us, keep us on time here. So, Jackson, I think you're going to tell us about this year's theme. Quick, quick, quick. Pass it down. There you go.
This year's theme of Lego Robotics is hydrodynamics, and what this means is, is we have to figure out how do we find, transport, use, and dispose of water.
And Alex, what did we come up with?
So this little gadget thing here is our Autoburb. It stands for the Automatic Building Runoff Prevention System. So this is a smart valve that you plug into a rain barrel and just forget it. It does, and it takes care of all of your watering needs. Up here, we have a rain sensor that detects if it's raining or not. Down here, we're, on the part that goes into the ground, we have a, we have a soil moisture sensor that tells how wet the soil is, and it's all solar-powered, so you don't have to recharge it or anything. This takes cares of it, care of it. So Avery's going to tell you how this works.
Our video, our computer round power, so you can use that.
Oh, okay. Well, that's great. So for, so whenever you put it into the ground, it detects if the soil is dry or wet. If the soil is dry, then it, then the water, everything's...
Somebody hold the microphone.
Okay. No, she has. So whenever the, whenever it detects the soil is dry with this soil moisture sensor, it lets the water out of the valve onto the ground, and it lets it out for 10 seconds and hold, then pauses it for five. But say, they, but if it, if the soil moisture detected that the soil was wet, the valve would stay closed, and the water wouldn't let out. If the rain sensor detected it was raining, then the valve would also stay closed.
And how do we install that, Sophia?
Okay, so you dig a hole, and you put it in, and then you put the dirt around it, and then you connect the hose to the water barrel, and then you turn it on, and then it's on, and it works.
And Brady, what's runoff?
Runoff is when it rains too much, the soil can't hold any more water. The water, so when it can't hold any more water, all the other water just runs over it. The water that runs over it is called runoff.
And Alyssa, why is that a problem for us?
Well, also, all the water that lands on buildings becomes runoff, and runoff is a huge problem, because it picks up phosphorus and nitrogen from fertilizers and carries them to lakes and streams. Even plain dirt carried by runoff covers rocks where fish lay their eggs.
And so we use that, so what is this thing that we've got over here? I didn't, how you guys tell me that?
Okay, so this is a rain barrel. So this is what you would hook it up to. I'll lift this thing up. There's a valve somewhere down here. Okay, so this is a rain barrel. You would hook up the Autoburb to the longer hose, you would hook that up to this valve right down here, and so then you just do what it does, and it would hook up. This collects the water from the building's downspout, so you hook, this would be hooked up to a downspout, and it would fill up with water when the valve was off.
Good. And how did we build that prototype?
So the way that, so the way that we built our prototype is we took a class at the Dayton Xenia Library, and we learned how to use a three-dimensional design software called Tinkercad. Each of us designed a component to our, to our prototype, and then once we, and then once we finished, we downloaded, we downloaded each component to a 3D printer, waited for it to print. Once all the pieces printed together, we just attached the pieces by melting the plastic to each other, and then voila, it's done.
Very good. Thank you. Good job, guys. All right, why don't we get ready to run the robot now? All right. Last, the thing you've probably really been waiting for is to run that, why don't you pull that over here to the side, is to run the robot. So the kids designed and built a custom robot. They named the robot the Darth Piggy, and they work on programming that. We've got some of the programs, if anybody's interested in looking at that. All of the weird things sticking off the top that they call those attachments are all things that the kids built. The table is standard, so that's the same table when they go to competition that they'll see, and they get to choose of all the things on here which missions they want to solve and which order they want to do them in, and they do this, and they have basically three tries. And at the competition, it's timed. You have two and a half minutes to get as many things accomplished on the board as possible. They're allowed to touch the robot in this corner where they're standing and reattach things, pick programs. Otherwise, the robot has to run out and do everything by itself autonomously on the board. All right, so they're getting it final ready there, and they're going to run a mission for us. Alex, what is this, what are the missions that this one's going to accomplish? Real quick.
So, right here, it's going to put in, put in this filter, it's clean and locked in, and then it is going to fill in the valves, and hopefully, this does not work all the time, complete this, so that the water comes out, because of the cooperation mechanism. Then over here, it's going to come over here, and maybe use the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
So it's going to, it's going to push in this filter, make it clean, and make sure that this is locked. It's going to push in this valve right here, and hopefully, it will do the cooperation mission, and put this onto the other team's table that would normally be standing right here in competition. Then it is going to make it rain. I'm not going to do this, because it's a mess, but, so it's going to make it rain by pushing this little bar right here, and then it's going to come back to base.
Very good. All right, let's see if it works. There, it did one.
Okay, it did not do that.
It's all right. Doesn't do everything every time. That's why they, there you go. That one's successful. All right, now we're going to see if rain comes out of the rain cloud. Yes, rain came out. It rained, and it returns to base. Successful mission. Good job, good job. All right, let's run the one along the wall. All right, so they are setting up. Yeah, why don't you run that one with Jackson there? Alex, you did a good job with that. How about you tell us what's going to happen on this next one? They're going to run the cup mission.
Okay, so this is the cup mission. So over here, it's going to come and fill in the filter till all, till all three of those little circles are up and running, and up, or something like that. Then it's going to come over here and take, pick, pick, not, oh, not in this one. Okay, yeah, not in this one, sorry. Then it's going to come over here and flush the toilet, flush the toilet, and then it's going to, it's going to come over here and fill up the cup.
And then one more.
One more. Wait, yes, it's going to put the slingshot into the base.
So you can see, you can get a sense there that there are different things, different things the robot has to accomplish. Some things it has to deliver, some things it has to interact with. It's going to, it pushes the lever on the toilet to flush the toilet, and, or the cup, it's going to push the cup to turn, to fill it up, or some things, and then it's going to take the slingshot, the red box, all the way to the very end, and doing that at the very far end of it, that's sort of a challenge, being able to stay that precise all the way through. Okay, here we go. See if it drops the water in. Dropped it in, very good. Now we're going to see if it flushes the toilet. Flush the toilet. There comes the sludge out at the water treatment plant. It filled the cup, and then pushes it in, and now it's going to come back to base. And came all the way back. Oh, just about, so very good. So they would get just a small penalty for doing that. Any other missions that you guys want to run?
No, we'll do, we'll do, um, this one, all four.
Oh, we got two more, two more. Can we, we'll run, we'll see if we have time for both, all right. Are you going to tell us what it's going to?
Yeah. Alex, tell them.
Or Jackson, I think Brady's going to do it.
So this next mission, it's going to put a model well in this circle right here, and then it's going to take two water models, stack them on top of each other, and place them in this square.
If all goes well. Good job. And you'll notice they reconfigure the robot for each pack. That's right. Yep, so they're adding new, new attachments, new pieces. All right, I say let's let it go.
Do you need the water? We need close drops, so.
All right, it's going to see if it can place the well in the circle.
So it placed the well.
And then it's got to...
Can it do the water?
Stack them up, they get bonus points.
And it stacks the water.
Stacks it up, and it leaves them. Very good. And that would usually be our, you can clap for that. That's usually our last mission, and so they leave the, they don't have to go get the robot, because that's the end. All right, we have one last one to show you, and then we'll be done. All right, who wants, anybody else that hasn't explained a mission want to tell us how this one works? All right, Avery's going to do this one. All right.
Um, so, in this mission, we are going to pick up the broken pipe and replace it with a new pipe, not broken pipe, and then we're going to put the tripod into the base. Yeah.
So in this mission, they, they talk about they have to get the broken pipe, so this is when we have to retrieve something from the board and bring it back. If they can bring it all the way back to base, they get bonus points for that. They're also, are going to put something in its place, which I would say this is our least consistent mission, so there's, I would, I would say this probably doesn't work, but it's always worth a shot to get just a few more points. You never know. And they're allowed two operators. They can switch in and out, or they can decide who does it. All right, here we go. Last one. Picks it up, very good. This is the critical one. Oh, very close. You can see, maybe, maybe, no, they wouldn't count that. You're right. And put it in the circle, and then return to base with the points. All right, very good. Do you guys have any questions or... Comments, questions? Anybody up here? Very impressive, very impressive.
Very good.
Well, please. Yeah, and that's what we were disappointed, that our computer decided to run out of battery. I think we have videos to show you of it, of it working.
Yeah, we proved it turns on. See, you're going to see the flashlight is going to come on when I turn on this light. So I proved that it turns on.
Now we just need water. All right.
So, yeah, we've cracked, we've, we've hooked it up to the rain barrel, and we hooked it up to a soaker hose, and we hooked it up with a normal hose, so.
You got it? You finished? Sorry, I'm a little late on the drawl there.
All right, well, it was a pleasure to see you at another center a couple weeks ago, and so it was, we had a ball. I know Ryan, I think, joined us, and that, we really did, and watching you guys do your thing was amazing. I see two people back here from UES that are looking at future employees. And so you brought a lot of smiles to everybody's face here, and hopefully, back at home as well. Now, from the city's standpoint, I would like you guys to remember coming to the city, so I have a letter, congratulatory letter for each one of you.
Oh, thank you.
You are very welcome. I think I gave everybody a lapel pin at the event.
Yes.
Now, see, hold, open them up. Put it on TV a little bit there. All right, well, listen, thank you so much for coming out tonight and sharing that.
Everything that we brought tonight out with us. Everything we didn't bring tonight stays here. We're going to move it out.
And we're going to try to move this table that direction. All right. So we'll take just a short little break here.
That was what, last Friday?
This one was, uh...
Oh, that's right, the one last Friday. I go to get my old school. Yeah, that's right.
You're very welcome, thank you.
And then I go to get my car, car died. Car's dead. Yeah, I left the light on in the car, because I couldn't find my cell phone. Well, yeah, that did, I think Wednesday night, it was dead Thursday morning, so I've been jumper Thursday, and I didn't drive it at all on Thursday, so Friday, by the time I went to get in the car, the car was already. I had to cancel before that, but good thing I canceled prematurely, because when I had to get the car at four, it was like, I couldn't drive.
Lincolnburg? Oh, I was keen for the, I had built like a five-story in Lincolnburg. Is that something? Gilbert Chemicals, that was not like 230. Thank you again.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quite impressive.
Well, we're full of special people joining us this evening, and so tonight, right now, I would like to invite two representatives of UES, and that is Ruth Carpenter and Lisa Porter. Please come forward, and if our Parks Director, Kim Farrell, would join me, please.
Yeah, I could see you smiling, and you were looking at the, those future engineers and everything. Impressive. Would you like me to?
You may take that off if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, for 45 years, UES has been rooted in the Beaver Creek area. We take pride in being good corporate citizens of the city of Beaver Creek since the Joshi family began supporting the local wetlands and the parks and recreation facilities many years ago. UES brings over 250 jobs to this region, most of them in science and technology. We are your neighbors as individuals and as a business. Many of our employees live, work, and play in the Beaver Creek area. We all share a common thread in our support of this beautiful city. UES is happy to be able to give back to our local community, so on behalf of UES, I am honored to present the city of Beaver Creek with a gift in the total amount of $15,000 in support of this year's Fourth of July celebration.
Wow.
Thank you.
UES has been a supporter of our community and our city for many, many years, and so it is with great pride that you're part of our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should we save the best for last?
That's right.
All right, it is Girl Scout Week. Would the Girl Scouts and the leaders please like to join us? I'm going to take this mic off again, so we can do introductions. Just get in line there if you're real quick, if you don't mind. All right, how about you start? Look out toward the audience there, and you start and introduce yourself and tell us what troop you're with.
Hi, my name is Ashley, and I am in Troop 33331, and, um, and I am a Daisy.
Hi, my name's Mia, and I am in Troop 33332.
Hi, my name is Kaylee, and I am a Brownie. I am in Troop 3334343.
Hi, my name is Kylie, and I'm a Brownie, and I'm in Troop 34343.
Hi, my name is Talia, and I am a Junior, and I'm in Troop 35376.
Hi, my name is Olivia. I'm a Cadet. I'm in Troop 32728.
Hi, my name is Dakota. I'm a Senior, and I'm in Troop 31226.
Well, thank you very much, and we have an important person down here on this end as well. Susan, please introduce yourself.
My name is Susan Grekemeyer, and I am one of the Service Unit Managers for Girl Scouts in Beaver Creek. Beaver Creek has a lot of Girl Scouts in it. The girls have a little bit to tell you about that here in just a minute, but I will also introduce some of our leaders. So Mrs. Amy Fagan is the leader of some of these girls, and Mrs. Jill Hooton and Mrs. Sandy Skin represent a small portion of all of the leaders and volunteers that make Girl Scouts Go in Beaver Creek.
Well, thank you very much, and I would like to read this proclamation for Girl Scout Week. Are you ready? All right. Whereas, throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the premier organization and leading authority on girls, builds girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. And whereas, in partnership with nearly 14,000 adult volunteers, Girl Scouts of Western Ohio yearly serve 50,000 girl members in 32 counties throughout the western Ohio and southeastern Indiana. And whereas, through the Girl Scouts' leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime, so they may contribute to their communities. And whereas, over 50 million women have enjoyed the benefits of the Girl Scout leadership experience as an American tradition for 103 years. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 11th through 17th, 2018, as Girl Scout Week in the city of Beaver Creek, and applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the leadership development of this girls, community of girls. So thank you very much, and I would like to present that to you. Thank you.
All right, so the girls have a little presentation, just so that you know something more about Girl Scouts in Beaver Creek.
Today is the Girl Scout birthday. Girl Scouts started 106 years ago with 18 girls. Today, there are more than 2 million Girl Scouts in the USA. There are almost 1,000 Girl Scouts in Beaver Creek. 50 troops meet in schools, churches, and businesses all over the city. We are very grateful for their help.
We also appreciate the support of the citizens of Beaver Creek. They help us with our money-earning ventures, badge-earning opportunities, and community service projects. As Girl Scouts, we will honor our community this week and every week by following the instructions given to us in the Girl Scout law. We will be honest, friendly, considerate, courageous, responsible, respectful, resourceful, and work to make Beaver Creek, Ohio, the best place it can be.
And, Mr. Stone, since you're here, allowing us to come, we want to make sure that you remember that every year, you are also an honorary Girl Scout, and Dakota has for you this year, yeah, this year she has for you the World Association of Girl Scouts and Girl Guides Pen that helps us all remember that Girl Scouts is indeed an international organization. And we do want all of Beaver Creek to know how much we appreciate the support that all of Beaver Creek gives us. There is no other organization for girls, just girls, that allows them to come together to grow as young women, and learn leadership skills, and practice adventures indoors and outside, and just have a good time together, and we thank the support that we can get here.
Thank you so much.[602.33][602.33][applause]
We've got gifts, so...
Got gifts?
If anybody has a particular choice that they would like...
Stay seated now. You can't come up.[613.73][613.73][laughter]
You have to be elected to get one of these. So girls, if they want something, they'll tell you. Otherwise, we can't...
And we would invite you to stick around for a few minutes and help lead us, lead us in the pledge, if you would, in a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Anybody would prefer a gluten-free variety?
Ooh, those look good.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, goodness. I can take two if you really want.
Thank you so much.
We'd like six boxes.
Oh, another one. Well, thank you. All right, that's fantastic. At this time, I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled meeting with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Littoral, Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van, Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Mayor Stone, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Van and Councilmember Littoral.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Van and Littoral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Upton for a moment.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I'd like to ask everyone to stand with me for the pledge in a moment of silence if you practice to do so. And I'm honored tonight to have the Girl Scouts here with us to help me lead the pledge. So ladies, when you're ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right, thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source and our guidance today. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes or alterations? Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move to approve the agenda as presented. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of our minutes, February 13th, 2018 Work Session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the February 13th, 2018 Work Session Minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Abstentions. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the minutes for the February 26, 2018 Regular Meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no comments or changes, I'd move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the February 26, 2018 Regular Meeting Minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Abstentions. Motion carries. Next, Public Hearing, PUD 08-1.
This is an application filed by Hilton Patel, 132 Deer Creek Drive, Fairborn, Ohio, 45324. The application requests approval for, of an amendment to add an additional 3.002 acres of land to PUD 08-1. The property is located on the west side of Glenn Brook Drive and north of Crestmont Court. The property is further described as Book Four, Page Four, Parcel Twenty-Nine on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Well, thank you. And I think we have the applicant present this evening.
Address, sir.
Please, give us your name and address and the floor is yours.
Sure. My name is Hilton Patel. Address is 1032 Deer Creek Drive, Fairborn, Ohio, 45324.
Thank you. Please tell us what it is you would like us to know about your application.
Would you like to explain it to them, please?
Your Honor, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Name and address first, please.
Yes, sir. I am Ron Kozar. I'm an attorney. My address is, my professional address is 40 North Main Street, Suite 2830, Dayton. It's 45423. Do you need a residential address too?
No, sir.
And I have the privilege of representing the Youth Group for Indian Culture, which is the applicant whose matter is before you. It's a humbling thing to appear before this council after such an impressive series of presentations by, by some of the talented young people.
Yeah, absolutely.
I dare say that when the time comes for the YGIC to make a similar presentation, you will be equally dazzled by some of the things that the young people in the Indian community here have accomplished. YGIC has run a school on the premises of the Hindu temple that, that I know you've all seen, that's visible from the Fairfield Mall. The, they would like now to house that school in its own freestanding building on some property that is, that is the subject of the proposed ordinance. While we were sitting there, Mr. Patel whispered to me about some congressional, congressional gold medals that were just issued to alumni of that very school.
Wow.
Within, within, within the relatively recent past and also a STEM school that is just named as its valedictorian.
And salutatorian.
And its salutatorian. Two, two recent, two recent graduates of the YGIC school that, that we need to find a permanent home for. So it's a real privilege for me to appear before this council to advocate that point of view. Mr. Patel is here to answer questions to the degree that my remarks haven't already covered some of that.
All right. Well, there probably will be some after we have the staff presentation, so we look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Shall we take our seats then?
Please.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The case you have before you is PUD 08-1. It's the, the YGIC or the Youth Group for Indian Culture. They're looking for a PUD amendment. Essentially, they're looking to add three acres to an existing eight-acre PUD in order to construct a religious education center. Project's located in northern Beaver Creek, just southwest, southeast of the intersection in New Germany Trebine and Commons. This is a closer aerial photo. You can see the shopping center to the west, which is the shopping center here. To the north is the existing Hindu temple. You can kind of see the, the spires from North Fairfield Road behind the shopping center. And then there's the Puja Hall, which was constructed about eight to 10 years ago, or went through the process here about eight to 10 years ago to construct. And now they're looking for this three acres south. The property is designated as office or brown on our land use plan. And the application that they're looking for this evening is consistent with our land use plan. So there's no concern with inconsistency with the land use plan. Again, the, the project is located, the three acres is highlighted here in yellow. To the west is CPUD 93-3, which again is a large-scale retail center. To the north is the existing 08-1, which is what they're looking to add into and extend the conditions that are currently in place for 08-1 onto these three acres. And then to the south and to the southeast is RPUD 96-1, which is what the property actually is owned right now. So they're looking to take it out of the RPUD and put it into the CPUD. Just, over the years, there was kind of different language on what the setbacks and buffers were. And they do, they do congeal into one, one statute, but I wanted to make it really clear. So I attached Exhibit A onto the proposed ordinance so that you could make it really definitive. The red is designated as 50-foot buffers, so no commercial construction within the 50-foot buffers. And we added it to the south as well to protect the residential properties to the south. And then along the rest of the property lines, a 40-foot building setback. So you could have parking lot, as you can see they did at Puja Hall, you could have parking lot within that 40 feet, but no buildings. So that there is some clear setbacks. But this three-acre property has about 135 feet of frontage on Lillian Lane. You could see here. And around the north property line, along the southwest property line, as well as on the south, I'm sorry, southeast property line and the southern property line, there is a six-foot mound that was constructed when they were grading this area and possibly some of the road and for the construction of the apartment. So, or condos. So there is appropriate screening for the residential properties to the south. So what they're looking for again is to extend the conditions of 08-1 to this PUD. And in the existing conditions of 08-1, there's a list of allowed uses, which is a modified list of office uses, which included in those uses are medical clinics, nursery, school, daycare, a bunch of different office uses, as well as banquet halls and places of religious assembly. So what they're looking to do this evening again is to rezone that so they can extend a school that's in conjunction with their place of religious assembly into its own separate place. So this does meet the requirements of the land use plan. And Planning Commission did recommend approval in the February Planning Commission meeting. So Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the applicant's request. And we're here to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is the first reading of this application, so it is a public hearing. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address counsel on this particular application? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for the first reading. And we will open up to council input. Anybody have any questions of the applicant or of staff? Councilmember Rushing?
Just a really more of a quick comment for the applicant. And just wanted to say I appreciate you wanting to reinvest in our community. And you've been wonderful community partners to my knowledge so far. And glad to see you wanting to grow that. Appreciate it.
And this, I was on the Planning Commission at the time, your honor, and unanimous vote to support it. Okay. Anything last, Mayor? All right. Well, I too would like to commend the community. The, we've been invited out to the temple on numerous occasions for several events. The temple's been there about as long as Beaver Creek's been there. I mean, it's a wonderful addition to our community and always a good neighbor. So thank you very much. And with that, do I have a motion to move this on to the second and third reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move this on to the second and third reading. Any further input? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Abstentions? Right. All right, sir, this now, we have two more hearings. There'll be one more public hearing at our next regular council meeting. And we'll move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Next item, Public Hearing, PUD 91-2.
This is an application filed by BSM Development LLC, 3011 Armory Drive, Suite 120, Nashville, Tennessee, 37204. The application requests a major modification for 0.872 acres of land to allow for the construction of a multi-tenant retail building located on the east side of North Fairfield Road and north of the KFC and LJS restaurant, further described as Book Four, Page Six, Parcel 67 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Applicant present? I think so. Please, give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Tibbetts. I'm with CESO. We're the engineers and architects on the project. Address is 2800 Corporate Exchange Drive, Columbus, Ohio.
Thank you.
And I would echo the sentiments about the impressive presentation. It's not oftentimes easy to stand in front of, you know, boards and, and public and, and give presentations like they did. And they were just, and not to mention, I don't think, I knew what runoff was as a middle schooler. And I deal with it every day as a professional. So we may be in the market for some, for some new engineers very, very soon. So that was, that was awesome to, to be a part of that and be present for that. So BSM Development is, is the developer in this particular case. They've actually got a decent history in the last few years of, of projects in Beaver Creek, starting with the Aldi Anchored Center that's behind the Abuelos. And then shortly thereafter, we, we came in with the Sleep Outfitters project, which is out in front of the Hobby Lobby. And, and, and this is the next project, which is next to the Long John Silver's KFC out in front of Target. So the proposed development is for an additional 6,800 square foot mixed or multi-tenant retail building that will be a combination of restaurant and retail. We're adding, well, we'll have 54 parking spaces that are being reconfigured with that development. Right now, it's the, it's the outermost portion of the Target parcel or the Target lot that is out beyond the, the main drive to access the Target property. So we are, we came before Planning Commission last month and are, and received approval. So we're here to seek your feedback and input as well. Welcome that once. Any comments that you may have or questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As was explained by the applicant and, and the content of your staff report, for your consideration, the applicant is proposing a new three-tenant Outlet Building located here just to the north of the Kentucky Fried Chicken. Just when this thing was, this PUD 91-2 was originally established, it was in 1996. I had a vision for how the property would develop. Most of that's developed as was envisioned in 1996 because construction came shortly thereafter on the major parts of the shopping center. We've seen some evolution with the development of the outlots and the restaurants, which we think has been a fairly successful development plan along the North Fairfield Road corridor. If you go to some other locations where the parking fields go right up to your main, their thoroughfare, there isn't much to soften the appearance of the big box tenants that are a little bit farther back. So that being said, with Target being on board with this application and helping soften the streetscape along North Fairfield as opposed to having the parking field go out that far with no concern about their visibility, we think this could be a pleasant or a positive addition to keeping up with that strategy that seemed to work over the last couple of years. With the, with that in mind, there was 40,000 square feet of outlot buildings approved. There was three different buildings. We've seen that kind of evolve over time. Where the Kentucky Fried Chicken was, it was really originally envisioned to be a 25,000 square foot building. Obviously, that's not the case. It's significantly smaller than that. It was about 20,000 square feet smaller than that. So with the construction, should this be approved of the 6,800 square foot building, we're still fall below the original anticipated square footage for outlots on this development. As you can see in the overall aerial photo, and as you may have from experience driving up and down that area, that parking lot is hardly ever utilized. The 6,800 square feet will require 45 parking spots, one for each employee additional to that. However, we don't, we think there'll probably be more than, than the nine or six employees there. So we, there is an overall overreaching or all-encompassing cross parking easement there, which we've seen work because usually that very western part of the Target lot's not utilized either. So we have probably employee parking with designated crosswalks to get across the street. Some of the landscaping, you'll see some of the landscaping will be removed from the site. The park, the islands, and then landscaping will be supplemented in based on the approved landscape plan to help, again, those areas will be parked. Lighting will be required to match everything that's out there on the side. No lighting poles will be in. The actual parking lot themselves will have to be within a curved island, a curved island. And the signage, we didn't get much on the signage, but there are requirements established in the motion that limit the square footage based on the amount of frontage the building has. I think it's two square feet per, per building frontage, per wall signs. And then there's limitations on the ground sign, even though they have not shown a location for one of those yet. Lastly, the building elevations are, like was mentioned, BSM's done a lot of projects here lately, starting with the Aldi project. They've also, with the Sleep Outfitters building and, and some of those projects along the line, they also are working on the retrofit of that, a lesser retrofit, it was basically a tear.
Yeah, retrofit.
It was a little more taken down than we thought. But yeah, I mean, it's, but they're working on the repurposing of the Logan's Restaurant as well, which I think you've heard is going very successfully with the Jason's Deli and the, and Giordano's being announced already as tenants before construction's completed. So they had an expectation of what we anticipate in our community. So it was fairly easy to work with them, getting through our architectural elevations, what kind of, what kind of presence we want to see along North Fairfield Road. The other thing, there is topography there along North Fairfield Road that drops down a little bit, as you might see from the Kentucky Fried Chicken. We have made them, and everyone around here try to screen those rooftop units. So it's not the first thing you see when you're driving down the road. We have forums that we permit to be on top of the roofs to help screen those mechanical units. So it does, it looks more part of the elevations than it does an actual, just a mechanical equipment on the roof. So those, those requirements have been carried over with this application as well. But this is a public hearing. It's a major modification. So if you have any questions afterwards, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, as you just heard, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel on this particular Once again, I don't see anybody rushing. All right, we will close the public hearing. All right, counsel, are there any questions of the applicant or staff? Any comments? Go ahead.
Mr. Stone, I do have a question, really more for the applicant, up there. Just curious really, so this is a brand-new building, obviously, that you're going to be building from the ground up. Do you have, and you don't have to tell specifically, but do you have tenants lined up for it already?
There are two tenants lined up and unfortunately, I'm not.
No, that's fine.
I don't need to, to disclose who that is.
Yeah, my, I guess my point is that the economy in Beaver Creek is really strong, that, you know, we're building things with tenants already lined up in, in our community. And in other communities, if they build something, they sit empty for months just because they want the potential of, of a tenant to come in. So, we've got a great community and wonderful partners like yourself building quality buildings, so we appreciate that.
I will, I'll tell you, we've, we've worked together on all of these projects and there are very few communities that we have the cooperation and collaboration with staff like, like we've experienced with the city of Beaver Creek. So, yeah, it's, it's been fantastic to do the work here as well, so thank you.
Councilmember Curran, anything?
Nothing, your honor. No, sir.
And last, mayor?
I corrupt and stole my thunder.
Huh. Well, I'll tell you why. All right.
What do you speak first next time?
Okay. This is just a little bit different, while it is a major modification. This is the, we do have a motion before us if somebody would like to, to make that, but this does not move on then to a second and third reading. This is the public hearing for this application. So, any further comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of major modification to PUD ninety-one dash two, MOD twelve-seventeen. On the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a PUD major modification as per section one-fifty-eight-point-zero-seven-zero of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are fifteen. I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve this application. Any further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, decision items. The DDC community leader fly-in is on the horizon and the, this is on the agenda tonight so we can discuss who or how many we may want to send on this DDC fly-in. So, I know I've had, I have my thoughts on the issue, so I'm going to start with mine, and that is that I would, we haven't, we did budget for it. I think that the city manager, at least for the first slot, should be included to get a broader feel for how the DDC and the fly-in can affect this, our community and be able to reach out to those individuals directly. We also have another request that would, that would like to attend. And so, as I'm going to ask first, is there anyone else that would have in mind that they wanted, might want to go on this one? I would accept it, or I might, but the, my knee surgery will prevent that, so. Anyway, we do have a request. Vice mayor has asked if it would be appropriate for her to attend along with the city manager or instead of the city manager. So, our discussion here tonight is, do we want to send two? Do we want to send one? And since nobody seems to, from council, other than the vice mayor is interested, that is the question, one or two.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I have expressed interest in this in the past. I think since the election, I've talked to a few different people on council as well as former participants. I think the DDC is a very important part of our community, the way they grow and build businesses here. With more people moving to the area, that just means more jobs. I think as a new member, I mainly want to go because it gives me the opportunity to start building relationships with the DDC, but also with the other participants on the trip. I know that there will be a lot of people from the area, a lot of them have the same issues we have. If you look at the broader issues, one of the, I think on the agenda, one of the sessions is addressing the opioid epidemic, and I think it would be great for both the city manager and I to both attend, since it's in separate budgets, because of the fact that there's more than one meeting that's planned at one time. That gives us a chance to stretch ourselves and show Beaver Creek in more than one respect. We are a very big city. Councilmember Upton hit the nail on the head when he was talking about our economic growth, and I think that just attests to, that we need to be a present in some of these local and national forums to show that when there's funding down the line, we should be considered for some of that funding as well. I think it's a great experience for Beaver Creek to be able to attend. I know it's been attended in the past with good recognition, so if council agrees, I think it would be great if we have a council member and our city manager attend to just show our presence there on behalf of Beaver Creek, so.
Okay, any comments?
Just a really question, just because I, I don't have any experience with the, this particular event. Not to say I don't want our city manager to go, but is it common for city managers to attend this, or is it truly, or is it more just elected officials?
From my experience, if I can speak, yeah, city managers go along, council members. Big focus on the fly-in is Wright Patterson Air Force Base, huge. And it's really worth your while to go. You'll, you'll learn much and it'll be a real contribution that they make to Beaver Creek and Wright Pat. Yeah. Yeah. I think it'd be a great idea personally.
Answers my question.
Do I have a motion to send, send two representatives? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send the city manager and the vice mayor as our representatives to the DDC fly-in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, authorized housing study requir- authorized housing study requirement. Mr. City Manager, do you want to briefly hit that one?
Yes, if, if you recall, we had a work session, I guess it's been a couple of weeks ago now. This is part of the CRA, the requirement to have a CRA is we have to have a housing study completed. We had spoken about how we would do this and be able to do this within our budget because we didn't have the survey. We weren't completing doing a paid survey, let's say a paid survey. We're going to do a survey, but a paid survey, and we're going to, council at that point during, of course, it was a work session, so there's no legislation passed. The council informally agreed that, yes, we'll utilize that funding for the survey to complete the housing study so we can do, complete the CRA. So, just verbalize it here and, you know, make it official on the record for council tonight.
Pretty much a house cleaning issue that, so there is a motion before us, written out, written out in front of you, if somebody'd like to make it or get some discussion.
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move to authorize a housing study as requirements for the Community Reinvestment Act.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, city managers' report.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Quickly, we have, the street clock is, streetscape clock is still there. It is now scheduled. If you want to see it, I know I'm going to try to get pictures and videotape of it being removed, but it's going to be Friday, Friday morning, about between seven-thirty, eight o'clock Friday morning on March sixteenth. So, that will then be gone for a couple of weeks for repairs. Also wanted to make everybody aware, we'll put this on our, of course, our Facebook and our website, but public notices have been published in the newspaper for electric and natural gas aggregation. The hearings, four different hearings, all held on the same day, but for electric aggregation, there'll be two public hearings, one at two PM on March twenty-second, two PM and six PM, March twenty-second, for electric aggregation. For natural gas aggregation, same day, March twenty-second, there'll be two-thirty and six-thirty. Both of the aggregations basically will, you have, actually, we'll put it online, I have copies tonight, but it's our Plan of Operation and Governance, Governance that is available for review, and of course, we'll have representatives here from energy alliances that will help us, help you answer any questions that you may have about the aggregation process. Again, that's March twenty-second, two o'clock and six o'clock for the electric and two-thirty and six-thirty for the natural gas. And both hearings will take place right here at city hall at, in council chambers. If you have any other questions, please feel free to call us here at the city hall And last to, for tonight is the July fourth celebration. That was fantastic what UES did. We definitely, definitely could not do it without them, and we appreciate all the other sponsors. But we're calling on community organizations, bands, groups, businesses, and organizations. You're invited to be part of the July fourth celebration in Beaver Creek, including the parade and after-the-parade events. We have on our website, under the Parks Department, we have a special page that's been created for the July fourth. It's a special page, it has all the forums that you need to participate in the parade and the after events. One of the forums is also a nomination forum. So, the July fourth committee is seeking nominations for the, to be the parade grand marshal, and applications can be found, again, on our city website, and please, applications for the grand marshal should be returned by May first. And any additional information, please contact the Parks Department at four-two-seven-five-five-fourteen. That's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Mayor's report. Well, a lot of it was before the meeting got started. I mean, the Lego experience that several of us had was really fantastic, and that was the second level, there are four levels of the Lego competitions, and this tonight was the second level. A week or so ago, they had, it was the top level that we attended, and it was a different type, a much larger robots, much, a very different goal, but we had, for the first time, a Beaver Creek team won a couple of awards on their very first attempt. So, we're very proud of them. Theirs are such, and their, the way they demonstrate them, I'm not sure they could come, but I did invite them someday if they would like to join us one day, but they don't have the tabletop. This is something they're doing in a, in a very large arena. But they still, they might join us one day. The Girl Scouts is always is fun to have here, and, and UES, like I said before, they are a tremendous partner in our community. The other thing that's going on is the air camp, and Dayton is the host of an air camp, and it's sort of like space camp in a way. It's not as recent, I mean, it's more recent, it's something newer, but they aim that largely at middle schoolers. And so, they do this in the summertime, maybe one, at least once, maybe twice in the summer, and it's a week-long camp for these kids that are interested in, in aviation, and it's a STEM project. So, if you have any interest or your children have an interest, reach out to, get online, look up for the air camp. I had the privilege today, they had a three-day session for teachers. And while I'm not a teacher, they happened to have a couple of empty seats, and they asked me if I'd join them. So, I did, and I actually learned something, and please don't ask me exactly what it was I learned, but it was very eye-opening today.
Teachers didn't give you a quiz?
Well, that's, the teachers will, I do believe. So, I plan to, to go again tomorrow and Wednesday, at least if part of the day, if not all day. So, I look forward to that, and the more we can get that word about out as well, they're wanting to, that is their largest difficulty, is getting the word out that they have this camp, because these are all very high-level, three-star generals, two-star generals, the gentleman that was in charge of all the civilians at Wright Pat at one time. I mean, these are some very high-level people that we have locally that have initiated this program, and then you have a lot of supporters behind them as well. So, at some point in time, you'll probably see that on the agenda that I will invite them to make a presentation to council as well, so we can look forward to that. And I think that is it for me right now. This will be my last televised meeting for a little while. I'm going to get me a new knee, but I have, the vice mayor will be able to sit in and take over. So, with that said, it is council time. Councilmember Curran, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I had the honor to attend the opera.
We did.
And I found that to be very, very fascinating, really a sharp event. Yeah, it was really neat. I enjoyed that, mayor.
Was it your first opera? It was mine.
No, it wasn't my first, but it was very well-done and just excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Councilman Up.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I would just want to echo your thoughts and comments, and thank you to UES. They've been a tremendous community partner for a number of years, and without them, the Fourth of July fireworks would not proceed as it does today. And also thank you to the Girl Scouts. Always enjoy the treat, every year Girl Scout Week. It always happens to follow my birthday, so I'm going to have a little treat this week.
Fewer calories.
Who cares about the calories? You only live once. But, yeah, that's, and then that, the Lego presentation, I think what I took away from it from my background when I was in school was their presentation skills. Every one of them spoke well.
Yeah.
Every one of them had hand gestures to go along with what they're talking about. None of them stumbled as much as I'm stumbling here, and it was just a wonderful presentation, and then, then the education behind it was fantastic, so great thing, and, and hope to see more participation from our schools on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to congratulate, as you all probably expect, on Wright State University for winning the Horizon League championship. This is their first time since two thousand and seven, so eleven years, and they're going to the NCAA tournament this Thursday. They're playing Dallas against Tennessee at twelve-forty, so make sure you turn that on. I also have the pleasure this evening to congratulate those celebrating their work anniversary, so I believe we have a slide that will appear at some point on the screen, and I'll read off the employees who'd be celebrating their work anniversaries. So, to start, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Mark Brown of the Police Department on his twenty-fifth year of service, Phil Westler of the Police Department on his twenty-fifth anniversary, our very own Mike Frazier of the, the gentleman who's been going in and out of the council meeting with the camera of the Cable Department for his twenty-second years of service, Jim Stahl of the Police Department, twentieth anniversary, Mr. Tim Lammer of the Police Department, nineteenth year, Mr. Chris Unro of the Police Department, his nineteenth year, Josh Kirschbaum of the Parks Recreation and Culture Department, seventeenth year, Mr. Adam Kemph of the Police Department on his thirteenth year, Mr. Sean Williams of the Police Department on his thirteenth year, Mr. Keith Duncan of the Police Department on his eleventh year, and Mr. Alex Hares of the Public Service Department, his fourth year, Ms. Lisa Wolford of the Senior Center on her fourth year, Mr. William Houston of the Public Service Department on his fourth year, Mr. Thomas Fox of the Parks Recreation and Culture on his third year, Mr. Andrew McViker of Public Service Department on his first year, Mr. Todd Brandonberg, Public Service of his first year, and Ms. Jessica Locksley of Golf, Golf Club of his first year. So, congratulate those who, whether it be from the twenty-fifth year or celebrating the first year of anniversary, thank you for your service to our great community. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I had the privilege of attending the Gold Award Ceremony for the Girl Scouts of Western Ohio on Sunday. I think it was the same day you were all at the opera, so it may not have been this past Sunday, but it was a really great event to see how accomplished some of these women were, and what was really neat was I got to meet every single one of them and hear about their projects, and I think the best part about all their projects were, was somehow personally driven to them. One girl organized a dance for special needs individuals, and she said because her sister that she was younger than her, she's been taking care of her, she has special needs.
and she wanted something for her sister to enjoy, and she thought other people would enjoy it. From Beaver Creek specifically, we had six young women who achieved this award, and just very quickly, four out of the six are now in college and graduated from Beaver Creek High School, and two are still in Beaver Creek High School, and they did a phenomenal job. One girl did a fair trade project where she brought awareness to fair trade operations in Oregon. One girl did math with bowling, which I thought was pretty cool, because I used to actually be able to take my bowling score by hand, but now technology has made it so that I don't really care how much I count. But she taught young kids how to do math by bowling, which I thought was really innovative. They had a local unplugged event where they built a little free library so you could get away from electronics for a little while. One girl did a project called Bats Matter. I'm not so sure I would really enjoy that project, but she had a lot of great reasons why bats are so important to our area, and ended up teaching everyone who came to the presentation how to build a bat house, so I thought that was really neat. And then also, we had another girl from Beaver Creek did a family retreat for Ascension families, Ascension parents, and also helped through exercise and dance. So, these young women really did a great job finding things that they were passionate about, and really great bravo to the Girl Scouts for teaching them from a young age to take this all the way through to college, so.
Interesting. All right, well, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? Well, I do see a Boy Scout in the audience, I do believe, and I would like to ask him if he would give us the privilege coming up and introducing himself and tell us where troop he's from.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's John Paul Keeper. I'm based out of Troop 85, which is based out of St. Luke's Catholic Church, which is right by here. I'm here to work on my Eagle Scout, which is the highest rank in scouting. I'm currently working on the citizenship and the community merit badge, and one of the requirements for that is to come to a community meeting and interview one of the councilmen or women, and talk about, discuss topics that happened during the, that were brought up during the meeting today.
All right. Well, thanks for being here.
Yep.
Just reach out whenever one of us can help you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to enter to executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purposes in consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes in conference with the city attorney concerning disputes involving the city that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember McKernan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. And while this does not conclude the meeting, this does conclude the airtime on television for the meeting. We will, there's no decision expected out of this executive session, but we will reconvene in order to, to end our meeting, so, thank you all for being here this evening.